Okay, well, let's begin the Iowa City Council Work Session for January the 2nd, 2018. The first topic is the Sangsay Gilmore House. Before we start, though, I certainly want to welcome Mazair Saleh to our city council. It's great to have you onboard.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate Tracy Hichu out there. Congratulations to you, Tracy. Well-earned. And I want to congratulate our new mayor pro tem, Pauline Taylor. It's nice to have you over here, keeping me on time and things like that. That'd be good. Okay, Jeff, you're going to start, right?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. The council picked a tough issue for their first issue in 2018. This will be one of the more difficult topics that the councils had to deal with in some time. And I plan to just walk you through that tonight. You've received a lot of correspondence on this particular topic. I shouldn't say "a lot," but there's some important background that's been shared with you, both from staff and from the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. So I hope you've had a chance to read that. That was in your December 14th packet. We also provided a hard copy at your desk tonight if you need to refer back to that and you don't have the electronic version still. In September, the University of Iowa and Gloria Day entered into a purchase agreement for property that includes 109 Market Street, which is referred to as the Sangsay Gilmore House in the correspondence that you've received. When this was announced, the church also indicated that they had a proposed location to move the site, which is on the same block, on Jefferson Street, in the courtyard that you're now familiar with. And since that time, you've received correspondence from, again, the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission and the executive director of the Friends of Historic Preservation with concerns on that noted location and some other thoughts on steps that could be taken to more appropriately preserve the Sangsay Gilmore House. In the staff memo that was provided to you on December 14th, there's a little bit of background on the historic significance of 109 Market Street. It is clear, I don't think there's any debate, that this is a property worthy of preservation. It's been targeted for preservation by the Historic Preservation Commission for many years and recently was determined to be the number-one priority for landmark designation by the commission. That was in 2015. But as we indicated, you can go back several decades into correspondence on the commission and publications that were written indicating the importance of 109 Market Street. So I'm going to kind of skip past that because I do think that's well-understood at this time, but we can get into those details if you'd like. In my staff memo that I provided, as well as the information that you've received from the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, there are several other options that are outlined. In my memo, I listed them as A, B, C, and D. Certainly, there are a lot of wrinkles to any of those scenarios that you could spin into options, E, and F, and G, and so on. Since our last meeting, I've had a conversation with the University of Iowa. I feel like I have a better understanding of where they are. So I want to walk you through what I think are the options for the council, based on my kind of enhanced understanding of where the university stands on this matter. So this doesn't necessarily follow the memo specifically, but you'll hear a lot of the same things that were mentioned in the memo. First option would be for the city to do nothing. In this case, we expect the purchase agreement to be finalized, and unless a new location is determined, that is, one that is not at the Jefferson Courtyard, then I fully expect that this building, 109 Market, the Sangsay Gilmore House, will be razed this summer. The university has made that very clear to me, that if they take control of the property, they will demolish the building. Number two would be to facilitate the code changes that are necessary to allow the church to move the building to their proposed location, which is the Jefferson Courtyard. This would be a fairly lengthy process. With a code change like this, I'd recommend that you start those discussions at the Historic Preservation Commission level. They would eventually have to get to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration and then to the city council, where you'd have to have three readings. So you're looking at a multi-month process in order to facilitate those code changes. In this case, you'd clearly be preserving the structure itself, but in doing so, it would no longer be eligible for landmark status. And as you've heard from the correspondence that I've previously mentioned, you may also be detracting from the historical relevance, significance of the properties that are on Jefferson Street as well. I do want to, you know, we all, or most of us, experienced the challenges that were associated with the cottages' structures three or four years ago, whenever that was. And, you know, and one of the takeaways that I had personally from that is, without compromise, sometimes these structures are lost forever, and that's not a good solution for anybody. I'm not saying that facilitating the code changes is necessarily the preferred solution, but I think that's something that council needs to keep in mind, is that when you're faced with an alternative of losing the structure permanently, sometimes you have to consider what other options may be there, even if they're not a preferred or desired solution. So, again, option two would be to facilitate the code changes necessary to move the church, or the Sangsay Gilmore House, to the church's proposed location on Jefferson Street. The third option is one that has not been explored yet, and that is to really enter in discussions with the church leadership about options for preservation. What the university has told me is that they would walk away from the purchase agreement if the church would agree to do so as well. Obviously, they have a binding agreement with the church, and they would have to get the church's agreement, but if the church was willing to, the university would walk away and they would not acquire this land. The university does not have an immediate need for this piece of property. They are acquiring it with the intent to hold it until a future need is identified. They see it as being proximate to their campus, and they eventually see the need for the campus to grow in that direction.
Jeff, could I interrupt for a second? I seem to have gotten distracted. Could you just restate what option three is?
Option three would be to discuss with the church what other preservation options might be. I have not had really an opportunity to sit down in detail with the church to discuss what may or may not be on the table, and I think that would be the next step with three. The one thing I did convey there is that the university will walk away from the purchase agreement, at least that's what they've indicated to me, if the church would agree to do so as well. Now, that may sound simple, but the reality is this is a $2.7 million purchase agreement, okay? I don't expect the church is just going to want to walk away from $2.7 million. On top of that, if you think about the next steps, obviously, the city's goal, or the council's goal at that time, would be to preserve the building in place, I presume. And so that property no longer carries that type of price tag if the church was still willing, wanting to sell that property. If they've determined that they no longer have a need, or in this case, what I believe is, they have a need to raise capital to reinvest into their main building. If they were to walk away from this purchase agreement, they're probably not going to find $2.7 million out in the community from a suitor when the city is going to insist either through designation or some other way that the building be preserved in place. The $2.7 reflects bare ground, is what I'm trying to say. Again, you know, my understanding in some, just very preliminary discussions with the church representative is that that money is really needed to reinvest into their building and to ensure their long-term viability in downtown Iowa City. So as we explore these other options, you just have to expect that there's going to be some conversation about whether, you know, the church stays in downtown Iowa City if they can't complete this transaction, or if they don't complete this. The other part of three would be to potentially discuss the church's interest in moving the building to the city-owned parking lot, which is across the street on Market Street. This is, you have an aerial shot of that in your packet, I believe, but it's a small parking lot. I have an isolated parking lot that is owned by the city. It, right now, serves, you know, primarily for some permit parking. It also, on Sundays, serves not only Gloria Day Church, but a lot of downtown churches. A lot of church patrons will use option, I'm sorry, the parking lot, the city parking lot, when they come down for that Sunday service. It's not a critical need in our parking system, and so, you know, I think we'd have to ask if we want to give up, you know, that asset to ensure the preservation of the structure. As indicated in the memo, a move across the street to Market Street would also put the designation at risk. So it could be that this move, while it preserves the building, as I talked about with the church's proposed location, that it may not preserve it in a way that qualifies it for landmark designation in the future. I indicated in the memo that, just on a rough square footage calculation, looking at comparable sales, we would value that parking lot at about $1 million. Obviously, when it comes to selling a parcel like that, and it hasn't been discussed in my time here, a lot more analysis has to go in to land at a reasonable sale price. You have to look at the development potential on the property and some of the unique site characteristics, but just on a rough square footage basis, you're looking at a $1 million asset right there. I would expect that the church would want to own that parcel too, as opposed to the city being in a type of a lease situation. And so you're probably looking at a situation in which you would have to turn that property over to the church, allow them to move the Sangsay Gilmore House there, and then if there's any remainder parking on the north of the site off of the alley, that that would be for the church's exclusive use. There are, again, a number of different wrinkles that can go into any of those options. There have been other options discussed, such as moving the building slightly to the east in the existing Gloria Day Church lot. I'm not describing those tonight because I don't think that they're of interest to the parties, either in that case to the church, and also the preservation in place option, as I indicated, that the university has no interest in that option. So I started by saying it's a tough issue. I think you understand that. There's not a really great option for the city here. Obviously, there's a purchase agreement, a legal binding agreement between two parties. We don't have a say in that agreement, but we do have some options that we can facilitate or that we can pursue. And as I described with option one, which is do nothing, I think the structure is eventually demolished. I think that takes place this summer. And I would tell you, if I thought there was any hope of finding a different outcome by doing nothing, but I think by doing nothing, that structure meets the wrecking ball. Option two would not cost the city anything in terms of dollars. It would certainly cost something in terms of the impact that the move would have on that Jefferson Street courtyard to the surrounding properties on Jefferson and ultimately to the Sangsay Gilmore House. And that third option that I talked about, focusing on the parking lot solution, you know, would cost the city roughly a $1 million asset. And that's not knowing if the church is at all interested in that option, but I think they'd at least probably want to sit down and talk about it. So at this point, you know, again, any code change that we want to entertain is going to take several months. If that's the option that the council wants to explore, we'd probably need to get that process started pretty soon here. The church is anxious to know what's, where the city's position is on that, so that would need to be started pretty soon here. What I'm looking for tonight is just some direction on how you want me to pursue things going forward. I think a logical next step would be for me and perhaps the mayor to reach out to the church and see if we can have a conversation with them about that third option and just see what is and what is not on the table. And then probably, you know, I'd circle back and report to you, whether it's a work session or memo, on how that takes place. But, again, I also don't want to enter those discussions if, for example, you tell me the parking lot's completely off the table. So I think at this point, I'll just turn it over to the mayor, and you guys can have a conversation. I'll answer any questions that you can. Bob McLeod is here, can answer questions, however you'd like to proceed.
Let me start by asking a couple of questions that have to do with the possible use of the Jefferson Street site. And when I ask these questions, it doesn't mean I'm advocating we do this. I just want to know something. So I need to know precisely what actions the Historic Preservation Commission and the council would have to take in order for the Jefferson Street site to be used, and also what legal constraints would apply. In other words, if there's a rezoning, does that mean if there's objections from nearby landowners, et cetera, that there'd have to be a supermajority? Or whatever, whatever the legal constraints might be. So in other words, would we have to have at least six votes in favor of taking action, or would four be sufficient? And then I'm wondering what would happen if we said, "No, that site is not available." I'm curious, and I don't know if we want to talk about that in public, frankly, but that is something that I think we ought to have sort of...
You're talking about the parking lot site?
No, I'm talking about the Jefferson Street site.
Oh, well, in that case, if that site, if the council's not willing to support it, then...
Well, I'm not sure that's true because we haven't talked with Gloria Day yet.
Understand, okay.
So, those are, all right, so I don't know about the legal constraints question that I asked initially. I don't know if you have...
Yeah, maybe Bob, if you'd like to come up and describe the code changes that are necessary.
Sure. The receiving, the proposed receiving site on Jefferson Street is zone planned high-density multifamily. It's our highest multifamily density, or zoning category. The green space is actually needed to fulfill the density requirements for the existing building there. So in order to allow that green space to be used for another use, the property would need to be upzoned, or the high-density multifamily zone would need to be amended to allow greater density or greater use than what's currently allowed. The other action that would have to occur for a structure to be erected or installed on that site would be historic preservation approval, and they would refer to the Secretary of Interior guidelines for treatment of historic properties and historic districts. We did get some feedback from the State Historic Preservation Office in Des Moines that it ministers those guidelines or those requirements on a statewide level, and they provide us with advice from time to time. The indication is that it would be creating a false sense of history to move a building from another era into the site. It would also harm the value of the green space itself, which is historic. We know that it's been vacant since at least 1865. At that time, it became the courtyard for the St. Agatha Seminary. Before that, there's indications that there was a stable in that area for the Park House Hotel, and we don't know if there was a building or if this was simply a grounds where horses were, or, and buggies were mounted and dismounted. So those would be the concerns of the Historic Preservation Commission in terms of putting something on that property.
Okay, so I want you to slow down and go back over this. Again, I don't know about other people, but it comes pretty quickly, and it's kind of complicated, right? So there are two things at stake, as I understand it. One has to do with the historic landmark designation for the building itself. The other has to do with the site at which it would be located, on Jefferson Street, and what that might do to the Jefferson Street Historic District.
Right.
Yeah, so slow down, please, and go over both of those.
Sure. Generally, based on the information we have and the information from the State Historic Preservation Office, the Sangsay Gilmore House is clearly eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. Generally, when a building is moved, except in rare circumstances, it loses its National Register status. The whole point is preserving history where it happened or on the location where it happened and not picking it up and moving it. So that would be a concern. However, the building currently is not designated as a landmark, so the concern would be at the receiving site, which is part of the Historic District and is recognized as a historic property. And that's where the commission, I think, would have to think long and hard about whether to move a building into that site. It would question the, or possibly reduce, the historic value of the courtyard itself.
And would that have adverse effects on the Historic District itself?
Potentially. That's the indication from the State Historical Society.
All right, so some uncertainty about that.
Right.
Okay.
The point being that the courtyard is a record of the history of that neighborhood. It's one of the few undeveloped parcels in the older part of the city.
Okay, I could probably follow up on things, but I want to give other people a chance to ask questions.
Before you go, Bob, the second part of the question, I guess I missed, is in regards to the property needing to be upzoned and what, I think Jim was talking about, the legal ramifications around that, and so what's the process by which that would need to take place?
You would either need to rezone it to a higher designation, such as the CB5 Zone, the Central Business Service Zone, and that would be a public, or a review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommendation from them, and then a public hearing by you. And with all rezones, it would be subject to a protest of a neighboring, or neighboring property owners. If owners of 20% of the neighboring properties object, then it would take six out of seven votes to approve the zoning. The other option would be to amend the current, the code that applies to the current zone, the high-density multifamily zone, to allow greater density or somehow address the issue that we'd be taking land that's necessary to support the current residential use on the property and allowing additional use there.
And there are other properties that have that same zoning designation? So any alteration of the zoning code?
Yeah, so it possibly could have implications for other properties that are zoned, high-density multifamily.
All right, but that'd be a majority vote only, that kind of amendment, right?
Right. A code amendment is, yeah. There have been some questions about whether an owner can protest a code amendment, and I'm not sure if that would be the case here or not. We can look into that.
Mayor, I may also add, you know, we haven't spent a whole lot of time getting into how that code amendment might look, but I would imagine we would try to tailor it as narrowly as possible to this situation. In other words, the upzoning, if you will, or the allowance for this type of thing would only occur if a structure like this fits. I mean, it would probably be a one-time solution, but, again, until we can really get into the details, I can't promise you that, but I wouldn't put a whole lot of stock into, you know, a change that would have a negative ripple effect to other similarly-zoned properties across the city.
I think I want to make sure I'm clear about one other point, which I know you mentioned a couple of times, but I want to make sure we understand it. Neither you nor I, or anybody else on staff, as far as I know, has had a conversation with Gloria Day people about trying to invent alternatives that would satisfy them as well as other interests.
That's correct, yeah. I've had some conversations with the representative, but it's more just been trying to understand what the purchase agreement is, learn a little bit about the solution that they brought to the table with the Jefferson. It hasn't been exploring alternative solutions.
But we have with the university.
That's correct, yes.
My question speaks to looking at option, like CA is how I put it in my notes, around the city-owned parking lot, or any type of moving of the structure. Will there be any type of rezoning change that would come from that?
City parking lot, I believe, is currently zone P for public, so it would, could be rezoned to what some of the adjacent properties are zoned, which would allow a structure on the site.
The other one, and I don't know if you mentioned this option, but it was a part of the packet beforehand, was the option to move it back into the parking lot. That's a similar situation as well?
To the Gloria Day parking lot?
Correct.
Yeah. I have confirmed that Gloria Day is not interested in that option.
But we have not talked with Gloria Day people?
Yeah. We have not sat down with anybody except one of the representatives, and as I floated that, the quick answer, and I think a firm answer that I received, is that parking is too critical to their operations. Now, yes, that parking could be replaced across the street, but I think it's the close proximity, next-door type of proximity, or front-door type of proximity that is incredibly important for that church and their congregation. So I'm comfortable in telling you that Gloria Day is not interested in that option. Now, maybe we sit down with a different group and minds change and they start to look at that, but I feel confident, based on what I've been told, that that's probably not on the table. Again, back to my question...
An option would not require a zone change. It would be part of the religious institution, and it would be permitted by the current zoning?
And that option would have an impact on the purchase agreement? There would be an opportunity to, you know, revise the purchase agreement. If we can work it out on the parking lot of the church, then the purchase agreement could move forward.
Yeah, the purchase agreement is fairly vague on the actual location. Basically, it puts the onus on the church to find another location, and so the university will financially participate in the moving, but they are not requiring that it go to any specific location. So if the church were to say, "Yeah, that's acceptable," my read on that purchase agreement is that the university would help fund that move, but that no amendment to the purchase agreement would be needed.
So that the $2.7 million purchase price would still be in effect? We would just be solving the problem in a different way?
My understanding, yes.
That was my question on the cost and move. As we know from the recent home that we had moved, the cost and who would participate in that.
Yeah. As of now, there's been no request for the city to participate, and my understanding is that the church and the university would be splitting that cost.
But again, that might be something we would need to talk to the Gloria Day folks, discuss that with them.
Yeah, I'll see how far that goes, yeah.
So Jeff, with respect to the parking, so it sounds, the option of moving it to the church parking lot, is the hang-up there is the loss of parking.
Correct. The loss of front-door parking.
Front-door parking, meaning right next to the...
Correct.
So the idea of any portion of the city parking lot would not be considered, would not be acceptable?
Well, I think that there's probably an interest there, and I'm sure Gloria Day users frequent that parking lot. What I'm trying to convey is that the parking spaces are not created equally. The ones in front of the front door are critical to their, they view as critical to their operations, so they don't want to, they don't want to lose those. You know, whether it's folks with mobility concerns, or elderly, or whatnot, they need that front-door parking, and with the move to the church, they don't feel like they would have sufficient spaces to meet whatever needs they have.
Because it's a little bit out of the, what has been discussed thus far, but one thought I was having with regard to the parking would be to look at street parking, again, which, you know, we've had this issue before. It seems to me if we could identify park, street parking locations, namely right along Dubuque Street, which was, is the frontage of the church... Dubuque Street, which was, is the frontage of the church, along Dubuque, or maybe I shouldn't say the frontage, but it does have street, it's not the principal frontage, but it has frontage along Dubuque Street. Dubuque is currently a four-lane street. I believe it may be possible that Dubuque could be reduced to a three-lane street, in which case the, that parking lane that is lost, or gained, so to speak, could be developed as parking along the church frontage. And not, right now, and looking at the parking that's allowed along Dubuque, it is allowed on Sunday mornings.
Right.
This would be something which would be allowed all day long. And, you know, my estimate is the, you know, the parking along Dubuque, if you go from Market to Jefferson, would be about 12 parking stalls, something like that. So it comes pretty close to the, I think we estimated 16 parking stalls?
It sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah. So if we're arguing about four, if that's an acceptable alternative, I feel we're pretty close to compensating for the parking loss. The placing the historic building directly adjacent to the church, I think, has some advantages. It, in terms of programming, as long as they want to maintain the ministry, it would be right there. So there'd be a direct connection, so to speak. From a preservation standpoint, it would be right next door, so that is about as close as we can get to the current location, that's the same orientation. So I would hope we could figure out a, you know, a mitigation of the off-street parking. And I would argue, and I don't know if the church would agree, but that having street frontage parking along Dubuque Street would be pretty close.
Along the lines of John's discussion, those, probably the church would want those to be the handicap accessible type spots, which we may have to designate, they would have to be designated that for their access. But also, you mentioned that if it was moved to the Jefferson Street, it might damage its landmark status if it's moved just slightly to the east. Does that still, would that still deter from its landmark status?
For National Register properties, they should be, all efforts should be made to avoid them, if you listen to the National Park Service. However, if a building is moved, if it's in close proximity, same orientation, general neighborhood, there's a possibility that it could still be designated on the National Register.
So I guess I'll step in here. I feel pretty comfortable, or not comfortable, but I could safely say, you know, some deliberation or at least a preparation from the last meeting holds true for me. You know, I think at the time I was in favor of looking at Option B, if we had to make a decision that night, if Jeff was saying we needed something. For me, there's a couple of, I guess not checkboxes, but things I kind of want to walk through. I do think it's safe to say that I think we need to have a conversation with the church. I do think this is kind of awkward, and I don't know if I'm upset, because, you know, me, I don't really get frustrated, because, you know, I appreciate what you're doing, Jeff, as kind of being the middle person in all this, but it almost seems there's a lack of kind of planning about the fact that this is going to come our way in some way, shape, or form, and almost in a combustible situation that's been somewhat similar if we didn't have this conversation now. And so that's frustrating, to say the least, because, you know, I at least would have expected, you know, somebody to make a public comment or two just in the last couple of weeks, but maybe it's going to happen tonight, so that frustration may, you know, subside. I would agree with, I mean, we were actually thinking on the same wavelength for a second there, so I agree about looking at, if this is truly about parking, I'm interested in what we can work out. I can tell you two things right now. I'm not interested in moving forward on moving the property to the Jefferson Street location. I think you, I mean, Bob, I appreciate you going through all the different code changes and Jeff as well, kind of talking about what that would look like. And I also just think it would just detract from the actual historical designation that's currently on that property. And so I'm literally not interested in that at all. I don't know how clear I could be in that. The other part of this is, I'm very tentative in my support about the city parking lot. You know, I can say it's my lack of awareness that we have the parking lot, we own that particular parking lot, but, you know, even Jeff just saying a million dollars, I mean, to me, I know you're just throwing out that evaluation based on, you know, similar evaluations of other property, but, you know, I feel some type of way about the fact that that could be, you know, I've been thinking about a potential affordable housing building or something along those lines. I mean, I don't necessarily know if the space speaks to it, but I'm interested in thinking about it more than just the conversation tonight. But I can safely say, again, a conversation with the church, not interested in the Jefferson Street location, and I'm tentative, when I say that, I don't think that if they're in the conversation deliberation between, you know, yourselves and other folks at the table, that's something that I think is almost used as a last conversational piece. But I do think that, you know, we need to get to a conversation with you two, the church, I think the Historical Preservation Commission should be there, the friends, and obviously the university as well.
I want to share some of the frustration that Kingsley just noted. It appears as though the university and the church entered into an agreement based on a presumption, a presumption that we would act in a way that was consistent with what they wanted to do. And that's a pretty big presumption. And it appears as though that was done without consultation with city staff. I assume that's the case, I don't know. Doesn't feel good to be placed in that situation.
Yeah, I can tell you, I had preliminary conversations about this, maybe, I'm guessing here, three weeks, four weeks before the article came out in the paper, when I think that the agreement had been pretty much landed on by both parties and they had location identified as Option D, that's when I became aware, is what I thought, yeah.
Well, I would just say, in terms of that frustration, when Kingsley and I were talking the other day, I expressed that same frustration, but probably a little more strongly. I won't use those words publicly. Yeah, I feel like this has been, I feel like the two parties kind of ignored the importance of the history of this building and have entered into an agreement and then just dumped it in our laps to try and make sure that this building is preserved in some form or another. And that's very frustrating, very frustrating, so.
What I would say is, even the early conversations I had with the church and then subsequently the university, I believe they felt, and they still feel, that the option that they provided is a good option for historic preservation. I don't, I don't think that they had any ill intention. Matter of fact, I think they went above and beyond what most parties would do in this type of situation and tried to bring a solution forward when the purchase agreement was executed. Now, could have there been more community dialogue? Potentially, but you're also talking about a purchase agreement, which tends not to happen in the open. So again, I just want to stress, the conversations that I've had, I think they tried, particularly the church, I'm not sure how much involved the university was, but I think the church really tried to find an option that they felt the city would be receptive to, and that, you know, allowed them to continue to use the building in the way they wanted to. I just want to make sure the intent piece is.
I personally don't want to make the university or the church, I don't want to make them look like the bad guys, but I think it's, there's an important point here, or principle here. It's one thing to believe you have a good solution that all party, you know, every interested party would agree to. It's another to consult with the other parties and find out. So that's what frustrates me about it. That could have been done quite privately, I believe. Now, maybe there are restrictions about what the university can do, about transactions like that. I don't know. But, you know, it's a frustrating thing.
I think it's frustrating too, because it's, just because of the parties that are involved, it's kind of a sensitive sort of thing. It's not like there are two private parties, businesses or corporations. It's the church and the university, which, that's a very sensitive.
We want to collaborate with the university, we don't want the church to leave, yeah.
Can I jump in here for a sec? I guess I do disagree with my colleagues a little bit on this. I view this proposal as an incredibly thoughtful effort on a part of the church as well as the university, to anticipate what they thought we would want, and I think it was done with great care, and I very much appreciate them doing that. I guess I would disagree a little bit with that. There's one seam that I haven't seen developed yet. I understand that doing nothing would mean the house would go. If that's the case, I'm assuming that that means the church place, I mean, I know that they place value on it, but they don't place a large financial value on that. They still get their $2.7 million. So if doing nothing means that it's destroyed, what I would like for us to explore is Option C, with the view towards engaging with a, an exchange-type thing, where the church or the uni, would essentially gift it to the city in exchange for the city providing that location, and then possibly landmarking it and then reselling it to a nonprofit. So that's just one iteration that I haven't seen explored. That may be totally unfeasible, but my starting point is that they're saying that if doing nothing, it will be destroyed. So it seemed to be at least that discussion could be there. Now, if that, if there's no seam, or that's not a possibility, then I think Option Two for me would be to explore this. But I think one thing that's critical for me is I think it's incredibly important that we maintain a variety of housing types, a variety of housing and worship, especially in our downtown. And it seems like the university and the church as well are really making an effort to make that happen. And so I want to ensure that whatever option we explore, the church does not lose the $2.7 million. As I understand it, that's a critical part of their efforts to stay downtown, so that's sort of.
I didn't fully track the alternative you're laying out. Could you walk us through it a little bit more so?
Well, I'll try to do it more slowly. Again, this would be a starting point. It's my understanding that doing nothing means that potentially the house will be destroyed. That's my step one. Given that that's the case, the church is not placing a great deal of financial value. I know the church places a great deal of emotional value on this building, and I know that they cherish this too, but it's a hard decision for them to make. So given that that's their starting point, I think our staff could engage in discussions with the church about a possible transfer to the city of the structure, with the view that we would then explore using the market space as a possibility, that they would, that the house would be built or transferred to that location.
To the church's parking lot?
No, to the city parking lot, 109 Market Street. With the view then, that after it was remodeled, we could sell it to a third-party nonprofit, maybe Affordable Housing, maybe Friends of Historic Preservation. So the actual dollar figure, in my view, would be hopefully relatively low, and we would have some holding costs and those sorts of things. I think we can absorb the lack of parking, but to me, that's the most viable. I don't want to get too much into the minutia of, you know, the church as well as what the university's done in terms of where they put the structure, but that, to me, seems at least a starting point for discussion with the church and the university. So that's the option that I would like to explore. It may turn out that that's not viable, but I think, given where we are, Jeff, it doesn't sound like we have a lot of time, so maybe we're at sort of the 11th hour, we don't have the time to do that, but, okay. So that's at least what I would like to explore.
Yeah, I think we have, I think we have time for those conversations. I guess what I wanted to convey to you is simply that there's, there's a code process that has to take place that's multiple months, and the church in particular, who has the responsibility of moving this and determining their future, they're kind of anxious to know where the city's going to stand on this. So the sooner that we can, we can start, the better, but I don't want to paint the 11th hour picture today. We do have some time.
So the purchase takes effect somewhere in summer, right?
Summer, yeah.
Yeah, so we got to set the process in motion if we agree upon a process, but we do have some time.
Yeah.
I'm more interested, I think, in John's proposal of trying to look at alleviating some of the parking issue and moving it just due east, closer to the church. I think that it gives, it gives the building the same orientation. I'm not sure the moving costs are necessarily any less, because everything you've got to do, want to get it in the air, et cetera, but, you know, it keeps it, it keeps the same orientation. You're basically just moving it sideways, but trying to be creative with the church in how we can make up that parking, whether it's, you know, along Dubuque Street or whatever, you know, whatever other options. I would see that as my first choice. I'm with Kingsley. I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to give up the city parking across the street. I think, I'm concerned about making a quick decision on that property. I think that's kind of what we ended up doing with the City Hall parking lot, was making, because of a timeframe, making a quick decision that we gave up a lot of, we lost a lot of opportunity with the city parking lot in terms of expanding City Hall or other things. And I don't believe that was the best choice. It ended up being kind of the only choice we had in terms of preserving that church. So I'm not, I'm not ready, in the short timeframe that we really have to solve this or try to solve this, to give up that parking across, the city owns. So I would like to work with the church in terms of finding other parking, and then I guess my second choice would be actually looking at the location on Jefferson Street.
Let me ask a clarifying question. I'm pretty much in agreement with you. I think moving it 10 feet, or whatever, the distance isn't very far to the east, is a pretty good alternative, if, if we can get the church to agree to it, yeah. But with regard to the church, do I understand correctly that according to the purchase agreement, they would receive, is it $2.7 million for the site? The university would move the building to some undetermined location, but the presumption is it would be Jefferson Street. The church would retain ownership of the building and continue to use the building, is that correct?
That's correct. Except I think there's a cost share in the move. I don't think the university's paying full freight for the move.
I mean, I get, excuse me, I'm supportive of what Susan said as well. I mean, that's, it kind of goes back to my Option B. I mean, ultimately, Jeff, I think you started it off greatly by talking about compromise. I think that, you know, this is a compromise, and again, this is the first blush. I mean, not to say that there aren't prior, I mean, additional options and conversations that need to be had, but I think that, for me initially, that's where the conversation has to start. Because, and, you know, and Bob, help me if I'm wrong on this, from a historical preservation standpoint, you know, I feel like, and I haven't necessarily had to argue before State Historic Preservation, but I feel like I'm pretty comfortable in saying, you know, if it was moving 10 feet rather than 30 feet or 50 feet, the argument would be a little more compelling than it would be if it was a lot longer. Is that the case? I mean, I know that we had the prior example, I think Paulie mentioned, where it was moved a substantial distance, but this is not moving it a long distance, at least to my knowledge.
Generally, moving it, or keeping in the same orientation, facing the same direction in the same block, that I believe would be acceptable, State Historic Preservation Office. I don't know that for sure, but given other cases where historic buildings have been moved and kept their status, that would be the direction I would think would happen here.
And that's why I go back to Jeff's point about compromise, because ultimately, I do think that, you know, I don't, I don't mean to say like mean things about the church, I hope nobody took it, you know, personally, but, you know, ultimately, when I think about compromise, I initially go to historic preservation first. And so we want to preserve the church. I'm not saying that the church and the university aren't a part of that deliberation or conversation, but ultimately, from my perspective, that's the first thing I'm thinking about as far as what we're going to do. And so my, the best option I see here is looking at moving it 10 or however many, 12 feet, to historically preserve the church, get that landmark designation. I mean, obviously, the option of leaving it there would be the best option to get that landmark designation, but it sounds like that option is, that's not a good option, so. And so, and then ultimately, whatever iteration we go from that, still is that first step of making sure that we're historically preserving the property. And so if it moves at 12 feet, and then the next option is we have to move it 30 feet over to the Market Street section, I mean, it has to be, that's my only number-one kind of focus.
I want to walk back my use of 10 feet. It'd be moved down to 50 feet or whatever the amount would be to the east.
If it was moved to the adjacent parking lot, I believe there's six feet between the parking lot and the property line, so the house is maybe 25 feet wide, so 25, 30 feet.
It was an inch or two from the drawings.
Right. You know, I think all. You know, I think also, while in the initial discussions, the church has kind of indicated they're not at all interested in giving up any of that parking, I think, as you said, Kingsley, it comes down to compromise. And I understand the money is really important to the church, and we want to keep them downtown, and so want them to be able to, you know, benefit from the university's interest in that property. But hopefully, they do also care about that preservation. And if they do, then trying to find a compromise with the parking and allow the building to stay, you know, just move it 30, 40, 50 feet, whatever it is, to the east, so it has the same orientation, keeps it as similar as possible to what it is now without leaving it where it is now, I think could possibly be the best solution that we can get to. And I would hope that we could, you know, find some creative ways to help them with parking that they would find acceptable, or at least acceptable enough, that would get them over the hump so that we can preserve it there.
I agree with Susan and John and Kingsley, and I'm definitely not in favor of the Jefferson Street move for a number of reasons. I think for the stability of the building, for one thing, and preserving that green space that historically was for a peaceful solitude, which we all know that it's few and far between in the Iowa City area, particularly downtown. And so compromising the historical value of that, and perhaps the church didn't realize that when they thought of that location, as well as the historical value of the building itself. I think it all still boils down to we need to meet with the church and maybe even the university and discuss those parking options that John had mentioned and that they might not have been aware of that we could do.
I think it's important, though, for us to keep in mind that, you know, if staff comes back and says, you know, "That parking lot's off the table," you know, as Jeff is basically saying it is now. You know, if after additional conversation with the church, he comes back and says, "They said no, they'll let this thing be torn down instead of moving it to the east on their parking lot," then I think that brings us back to that conversation of Jefferson Street again, and at least having some consideration of that. So I just bring that up because as people sit here maybe and say, "No, I'm not at all interested in that," we may be back to talking about that, and I think we may be back to us having to make that choice of, do we want to see that church torn down? Or are we willing to accept a compromise of moving it to Jefferson Street, even though that is certainly not the ideal?
And are we absolutely certain that the university, that's their only option, was to demolish the building? I mean, as we saw with the option over here, the developer was willing to compromise and work around the church. And would there be some possibility of talking to the university about doing something like that?
Yeah, I have, in no uncertain terms, I've been told. They're not interested in the site unless it's bare ground. But if preservation is a priority, they will walk away from the purchase agreement. That takes the church's cooperation to do so. So if preserve in place is what we want, the university's not going to be a part of that solution, other than to walk away from their purchase agreement if the church would agree.
Yeah, and if they walk away from the purchase agreement, then no money gets transferred, and that might influence the church's decision about what to do.
Yeah, you know--
Full series of moves.
This isn't the only property, and the $2.7 isn't just for this property. There's another property on Clinton Street, too. So I don't know whether the church and university would, you know, be interested in, or, you know, pursuing the Clinton Street property and carving this one off. I kind of doubt it, because I don't think there's much development potential for a campus-style building with just the Clinton frontage. I think you need to get deeper into the lot, but--
That's the way it sounded to me when we were talking with university people. It sounds to me, tell me if you all agree, it sounds to me that Jeff and I, I think, should meet with Gloria Day representatives, explore possibilities, see if we can work out some mutually satisfactory agreement. And then regardless of what the answer is to that question, come back to the rest of the council, hopefully within two weeks, and figure out what we're going to do.
Jim, the only thing I would add as an addendum is getting the -- generally, I know she's out in the audience, Historic Preservation Commission, and also Friends of Historic Preservation as well, into that conversation. I think it'd be a -- I mean, just from the preservation standpoint, I think it'd just be good to have them part of the conversation.
Well, I can say I have advocated that we have multi-party negotiations with all parties present, and that there doesn't seem to be sufficient interest in doing that.
Well, I haven't raised that possibility with the church or the university. If that's of interest, I'd be happy to try to facilitate that.
I would like to ask--
Maybe we should -- I'd rather talk with Gloria Day first.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then maybe there'd be further interest. But we certainly want to know what Alicia and Genely think. I know you've expressed views very clearly in writing. We understand that. We've talked a lot, so, you know, I understand that, but it's a conundrum.
You know, in addition to parking along Dubuque Street, which I think seems to be a very real possibility to me, another thought I had had would be for the city, and I know this isn't as convenient as street parking along Dubuque, but the city could lease some portion of the city parking lot to the church as a mitigation. I would prefer that whatever parking would be leased would be on the alleyway side so that, you know, it wouldn't -- it would still give us more flexibility in terms of, you know, ownership of the property and the future of that property. But I certainly hope we can impress the church that, you know, we, like with unitarians, we would like this to be a win-win. I view this as how can we achieve a win-win situation? You know, preserve the historic house, which is used as a ministry by the church, keep it in close proximity to the church itself, address the parking, and preserve what I think is, aside from its historic value, a very beautiful courtyard in the downtown. I mean, there--
Yeah, for sure.
You know, as a professional site planner, you know, that site, aside from its historical significance, is a beautiful space, and I enjoy just walking by it. I mean, you know, we sort of talked about how it benefits the residents who live around it. It's one of the most beautiful outdoor spaces in the downtown area. So placing -- do we place the historic house in a parking lot or in a beautiful courtyard? You know, it sort of makes my head spin, but I understand, you know, these are negotiations. But I certainly hope we can work it out.
Anything else? Welcome to council discussions on complicated topics. Thanks, Bob. All right, so we could move to our next item, if there's no further discussion about that. And Jeff, you and I can talk a little more about that tomorrow.
Sure.
Let's see. Too many notes, too many notes. So we're moving to clarification of agenda items.
Oh, man. IP is it? So the 3D4. Simon, this may be a question for you. And see, I see the curb ramp 2017. So where are we on the completion of kind of the ADA accessibility curb ramp conversation?
This year's project was really helpful in making some good progress in the neighborhoods that still had raised curbs at a lot of intersections. So the predominance of the intersections around Willow Creek Park over there that you saw in the memo, those were largely sidewalks that still had full curbs on them. So it wasn't a ramp that had been installed that happened before the truncated domes were required, or that fell out of requirements with the slope or what have you. It was, you know, full curbs. So this was, you know, a good place to pick off some of those. We had about 200 of those left when we did the inventory out of about 5,000 curb ramps. So this was a big way to accomplish some of those.
I just wanted you to give an update.
Yep, thanks.
The other one is item 5A. So I got an email from Eleanor--
Is there rezoning?
Yeah, Lincoln rezon--
Talk about the rezonings. Have to do that in a formal meeting?
Oh, I'm not going to talk about--
He's not going to talk about the substance of it.
Yeah. I just plan on recusing myself. I'll give a brief statement during council. There was, I believe, a conditional rezoning last time that after I talked with Eleanor, we felt comfortable moving forward. I can tell you right now, I have nothing to do with rezoning, but, you know, I still want to, just in case people may perceive it, I'll recuse myself.
Fair enough. How about item 3F1, which is an email from Richard Stapleton, who lives on Langenberg. So I'm sure you all read it. He's upset about the traffic, and in fact, he seems to have been hit by a drunken driver out on Langenberg. So not surprisingly, he wants us to do something about speeding traffic on that street. What can we do? There's parking on both sides of the street. We have speed bumps. We're going to be building Macalester. Is there anything else we could viably do, or has been done, I don't know, by the police department or whoever, about that?
Likely not without great expense. We've done targeted radar down there. We've got logs of all those. I don't doubt that there's significant traffic issues there. Certainly, we hear about it, but unless we want to go into narrowing that road and physically adjusting curb lines, there's not much we can do beyond what we've done.
Or stationing an officer down there 24 hours a day.
I also was concerned about his letter, of course, from the healthcare standpoint, and to hear that somebody was actually injured. And I thought we had approved the speed humps already on that street. But I'm hoping that maybe with the development of Macalester Boulevard at some point, of course, that's a couple of years down the line. Because right now, I think what's happening, and I've driven over there, because my daughter's in-laws live over in that area, that people are cutting through there, and they're using it as a cut through.
Absolutely.
And when people are doing that, they're speeding, they're going a little too fast. So, you know, hopefully, over time, that's going to happen. But if there would be anything else, and then the stops, maybe the stops at Macalester and Gilbert will help a bit, too.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. The Macalester extension is the best thing that we can do, and that's slated for 2019 construction.
The collision was at Covered Wagon, where it intersects Langenberg. You know, I did see that on the police report. It did raise to me the question of whether a stop sign, making that a intersection with stop signs, might be something to consider. There is also that open space right across the street. As I recall, I think I've heard correspondence that, you know, kids play in that space. I wouldn't doubt that they do. Seems like, you know, it's a close-by, open green space, but it's surrounded by roadway. So it seemed to me, at least with respect to that incident, if not speeding on Langenberg, that considering a stop, you know, putting in some stop signs there, and I know that, you know, in speaking with staff, at least with respect to traffic calming, there is some resistance to stop signs. I guess my response is that at intersections, there's kind of a different set of conditions that we're dealing with, and that, too, it's a relatively inexpensive way to test if at least the safety might be improved. Because that is, it's at intersections where collisions tend to occur. You know, they don't occur at mid-block, they occur at intersections. And I don't know that a traffic circle would even work there. But it seems to me that stop signs, if nothing else, slow down the traffic where traffic interfaces. And so the likelihood of a collision is lessened, and the severity of it is lessened, should it still happen. But it does seem to me that, you know, it could possibly at least improve the situation at that location. And I don't know whether stop signs -- there are some intersecting streets on Langenberg itself, whether stop signs could be--
Do those have stop signs?
No.
Okay, that was a question I was going to ask. I mean, if you've got people speeding down the street, then, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, John. People aren't necessarily going to like it, but what about starting with stop signs at every single one of those intersections?
I would agree as well. You know, I--
We're not traffic engineers, I get that. But at the same time, the number of complaints that we have gotten from people on Langenberg about the severity that they see of the traffic problems along there, it does. It just makes me start to question, should we stick up stop signs?
It's over half a mile from where Langenberg meets Covered Wagon to Sycamore. And as we know, it's a 30-foot-wide street. Unfortunately, there isn't enough parking to narrow the roadway, the perceived roadway. You know, the traffic calming effect of having cars on the street isn't happening there. So it seemed to me that it's something I think we could explore and test.
We can certainly -- I can explore that. I can tell you, because I've had a number of these conversations over the years, sometimes what you get is unintended consequences. And in this case, you still have people that are trying to get from point A to point B very fast, and so they roll through intersections, they speed up between stop signs, and oftentimes the stop signs can give a false sense of security to a pedestrian crossing the street because the cars start to realize, these are people that aren't cutting through one time, these are probably daily commuters that are coming through that area, and they start to realize that they can just roll these stop signs. And I think the worst thing you can do, I'm not saying it's the case in this one, but sometimes the worst thing you can do is put up a traffic control that gives a false sense of security to somebody. But I can explore that with our traffic engineering staff and see what they think. You know, we can look at striping lines and things like that to narrow it up. But ultimately, I just don't think that anything is going to get to the desired result short of building Macalester. And even when you build Macalester, you'll have the occasional cut through, but that's what's needed to relieve traffic from that neighborhood.
I would also say, I'm not an expert engineer, but I am an expert speeder. And I would say that in this particular case, I want to give kudos to staff, first and foremost, because those aren't regular humps, or speed humps. I mean, it takes some navigation to drive through those. I'm just telling you--
The voice of experience.
I had to slow down. And so it's -- I say that to say that then the email or the information we got really concerns me, because, I mean, those are some of the ones that I see in some other places. I mean, these are some substantial ones that have gone in, and that worries me from kind of the safety point that I think you're bringing up, John and Susan. And so to that extent, you know, do we have any data as far as, if we're not necessarily going with stop signs, the time of day that we could -- I mean, I tell you right now, the quickest thing to stop me is police presence. And it only takes a couple of times. I can speak to you about, you know, University Heights. It only takes a couple of times where, you know, I've gone through there, and, you know--
Melrose.
Yeah, Melrose, and I'm always going to go 20 through there, even though it's 25. And so I think that looking at the times of day, and I'm sure it's during morning and afternoon times, because that's the only time when I have done, and I've done it myself and seen a number of cars, looking at that, I think would be a way of doing it, at least initially in response, if we have the staff power to accommodate in that particular way.
Yeah, we have all kinds of data. We have all -- I was just pulling up an email from our police department that I had from back in May, when this previously came up. Between April 6th and May 15th, we did 18 enforcement stings down there, if you will, parked a police car down there for durations of time. The numbers that they got, you know, they had one car at 34 miles per hour, it's a 25 mile-per-hour street, one car at 31. In most cases, the max speed was 27, 28. The average speed was 22, 24. Whether that's because the presence of the police officer was seen in advance and people were slowing down, but the point being, we have all kinds of data that we can offer. I'm not saying that speeding doesn't exist. I'm sure it does. You wouldn't be getting the complaints that you'd get if it didn't. I could tell you, in this particular case that you've got the email in on, speed was not a factor in the--
Well, and I was just going to say, I mean, this was a drunk driver, and so that could happen anywhere, anytime, regardless of speed. That's unfortunately--
And it's -- I don't think it was -- there was no charges of OWI in this case. I think that was undetermined.
Okay.
So with regard to Langenberg, I'm looking at a map right now. There's only one significant intersection on Langenberg, and that's with Russell, which is a north-south street. It apparently starts, or that intersection's about, the whole thing's about a mile, Jeff, you said, from-- you said, from?
Half mile.
Half mile. So the Langenberg intersection is about a third of the way in from Sycamore. And then there's another two-thirds of the way going over to Covered Wagon. So, you know, maybe a stop sign could go there, maybe a stop sign could also go at Covered Wagon, people would roll through it or ignore it, either one of them.
Again, I think, and I understand, I know, I lived near an intersection with a stop sign on Brown Street and at Van Buren. But I would have to say that a roll, someone even rolling through that stop sign is better than 30 miles an hour. And when you have kids playing, you know, I know we've discussed, there's a huge difference in terms of the impact of being in a collision at 20 versus 30. You know, it's, the risks increase exponentially. So I think it's certainly something worth exploring.
Yeah, I think we want you to look into it.
We can explore that, the possibilities.
I hesitate to bring this up, but, you know, at some point, you could look at Speed Cammer Enforcement, too. That would take a whole, big policy discussion.
Haven't we been preempted about that?
You want a surf fire solution? There you go. I'll assume there's no interest in that and move on.
Back five years into the past, weren't you?
Not till we get the court settled on that. I'm not sure they're done with that yet.
You know, are we through with Langenberg?
Yeah.
Yeah, move on.
That was a lively discussion.
Well, you know, just, the next one is on, away, it's not the next one. Wasn't there a correspondence, or no, I'm sorry, it was in the information packet, never mind.
I was going to mention, there's a couple of different ones in here, but 3D6, the South Gilbert Street Trail Connection, nice to see some of these coming in way under bid.
All right, any other agenda items?
Item six, just wondering about whether or not we're supporting this park development. Like, and so are we looking at, so we're doing the park development, is this going to be a part of our park system?
Yes, it already is.
So then my question is, is about this, I mean, with the improvements and other things, I mean, how are we doing about staffing? Actually, that's my question. I'm more worried about our park staffing in general. And maybe that's a budget question that I.
Yeah. I think it's a very legitimate concern and something that is appropriate for budget. I can tell you, if you look back at the last five or six years of all the park lands and facilities that we brought on, it's truly astonishing. Terry Trueblood, Ashton House, Cardigan Park, Front Holtz Miller now has been built out. We've acquired a couple other neighborhood parks. They've taken on a lot more without any additional staff. You'll recall, three, two, three months ago, you authorized us to move a vacant wreck position over to the forestry unit to provide some relief. In the proposed budget that you'll discuss on Saturday, there are no new parks positions. But I would tell you, they're at the top of my, the top of my list in terms of, there's a lot of areas where new staff could be, could be utilized and parks would be one of the top few, especially as we bring on riverfront crossings.
To follow up with that real quickly, do we contract out the mowing of our parks or does our staff do it?
No, we do have some contract mowing. And I think I allude to this in the transmittal letter potentially, but we are increasing the amount of contracted mowing, or recommending that to you. But we tend not to contract out the parks. There's a lot of right-of-way easements in neighborhoods, kind of just goofy parcels that we mow. And it's been, it takes us a lot of time. By the time you get a truck out there, you drop your mower off, you mow it, and you move on to the next one, there's just some really inefficient areas in the community for us to mow. That's where we're trying to push some of the contracted mowing to, to free up our staff for the care and maintenance of the parks. Because what we're hoping for is that they're not just mowing the parks, but they're also keeping their eyes open for other things, whether it's vandalism or a shingle that may be coming off a shelter or something like that.
All right, can we move on to the information packets? December 21.
IP2, your report on the NLC Summit, I found that very interesting. First of all, if the details could be worked out, you'd mentioned possibly meeting jointly with the Ames City Council. And I thought that would probably be a wonderful idea. It's another university community and said something about meeting halfway. So I think that would be a great idea. And along with that, it was compelling to see the number of cities that are seeing some of the same roadblocks that we recently encountered with our state legislatures. And it kind of put a word to it for me, was the preemption to nullify our municipal ordinance or authority. And Iowa City's long been known as a community that stands together and works hard to stand for what we believe in and seek alternatives to work for everyone. So I think that's a good, good thing for us. We won't just stand by and let them nullify things. And the article stated that the key is the active communication between state legislatures and city officials to minimize any negative effects. And that kind of goes along with item nine in our packet with our legislative priorities and the hiring of our Carnegie Appleby firm to lobby for us. Jeff and Simon, whoever else was lobbying last year as best you could, thank you for those efforts. We just kind of hit a lot of hard times there. But I think the lobbyist is going to be one of our best investments that we have in our budget.
Well, thanks for bringing up that topic, Pauline. Preemption was clearly a major topic of conversation at the NLC City Summit. And that's why I wanted to put that short report together for you and include that report from the National League of Cities. It's a major issue for cities all over the country.
I think we do, kind of to Pauline's point, we need to restructure how we're communicating in the conversation because it's, to me, it's almost counterintuitive to the policies of many of these state, you know, legislatures and how they're acting around local control. I mean, this is, to me, like, you know, law school government 101, as far as, you know, the fact that many of the politics around it is that there's taking away from the federal government to give more local control at the city level. And it seems like we're losing control. Makes absolutely no sense to me.
There's a rationale behind it, but you've got to kind of dig into the political stuff. So could I ask, Pauline made a comment about the imitation from the Ames Councilman, Tim Garten, for us to meet halfway, some of us at least, to meet halfway with some Ames Council members. He had some other suggestion as well, I don't remember what it was. So, but I'm wondering if you all have interest in maybe having a delegation of our council meeting with the delegation of theirs, either in Ames or here or halfway. And I can follow up on that.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
I see a lot of nodding heads. Okay, I'll follow up on that. Okay, any other agenda items out of the November 21 packet?
Just IP3, excited about the work that our waste minimization department and other departments have been doing as far as diverting, you know, 15,000 tons. You know, I eat a lot, but that's a lot more. So great work and keep it up. Select the update.
Same on IP6, all the volunteer work that's gone into the gardening in the downtown area. Really appreciate that.
Okay. Moving on to December 28.
IP6, you'd mentioned the promotion of Tracy. Congratulations again. I, of course, have worked with her on the Invest Health Project quite a lot, and she's provided a lot of direction and leadership for that, and we've accomplished a lot. And I'm certain that she will do the same for the NDS Department. Congratulations again.
Absolutely.
IP5, so you talked about some of the concerns and no further changes. So it sounded like we offered a couple of options to residents. There isn't any further changes that we need to make to the ordinance that we passed or the resolution we passed. But what were the residents' responses? Was it kind of like, you know, thank you for providing these options or was it still upset?
I believe they're still working on solutions with the residents. So MPO has created a dialogue, and so they're still working with them. I believe that the people who'd come for public comment were interested in other options, whether it's a stop sign or some other continued police presence. But we did have some patrolling out in that area and a monitoring device to see what the speeds were. So we'll see what happens from here, what the residents want to do.
Yeah, I was, I just was really impressed with those two individuals, those two men who came. I mean, they get it. You know, they get the question of neighborhood traffic safety. And they intuitively gravitated toward the solution, which is, you know, trying to narrow the effective width of the road. You know, unfortunately, in this case, the road is only 24 feet wide. So you end up with a relatively narrow opening if there are two opposing cars. But I do hope that we come up again with a resolution of this. I would be very disappointed if the neighbors walk away not feeling that their concerns are being addressed. And, you know, it is another, I looked, you know, for contextual purposes, and I understand this is a conversation staff will be having with the neighborhood, but on Davenport, from Governor to where it terminates at the park there, that's about half a mile. And there are no stop signs along that stretch. Reno Mini Park is directly north of the intersection of Davenport and Reno. So, you know, they came and mentioned at our council meeting the idea of a stop sign there. And, you know, I think, and again, I know that staff, that's not really part of the bag of solutions that typically is included in a traffic calming program. But if their concern is the speed at the intersection, short of a traffic circle, you know, that is, that would be the way to address it. The other thing that I would just mention is, on a narrow street, it is possible to park on both sides of the street if you do kind of a checkerboard effect. In other words, you know, the cars aren't directly opposite one another, but you stagger the parking. That, you know, that would work with a 24-foot wide roadway. So that you always, you always maintain sufficient clearance there, but you're not creating a straight shot with parking only on one side. So that the drive lane, in effect, weaves between the parking bays. The challenge with that is, is there enough street parking on Davenport to work with that strategy? Because unfortunately, this is what concerns me going into the traffic calming program. There isn't that much volume, we know that. And the speeds may not meet our criteria, which are 30 miles per hour. So I'm concerned that we're going to end up with a situation where staff would say, you just don't meet our criteria on traffic calming. And we'd end up with no action.
IP7.
Which one is this?
This is the budget. This is the budget agenda item, but I talked to Jim Pryor, but I wanted to introduce this to council, have an idea. All right, I need your support. So we talked about prior, and I've been kind of racking my brain, I think I brought up to Jeff, that we should do like a Facebook Live event around the budget discussion and some other things. But ultimately, one, I thought that was kind of lame. But then two, in thinking about how we can bring people into it, at least initially here the first part of our budget conversation, I've tentatively named it Breakfast on the Budget, the first annual Breakfast on the Budget event. So people would come at 7:30, and, you know, I'd be willing to be here at 7:30, mingle with city council members, talk about their respective views on the budget, and ultimately get an opportunity to, you know, be informed about just that first portion of the budget. And I kind of talked to, I haven't talked about it at kicks, I see actually, what is it, last week, I think, yeah, last week. And there's just a wealth of information just within that first summary packet that I think people need to hear. And I think that there will be an introduction at least to getting people engaged. I'm hopeful that, you know, as soon as we can send a communication out, I can tweet it out and get some interested folks and maybe kind of pull some folks in. But I think, Rocky, you brought this point up before in a different way, but I just thought that there would be something that we could do, low cost, to get people in here, at least for that first part, no more than an hour. I mean, weather obviously pending. So what are your thoughts?
Worth a try, yeah.
I think you have support.
I think that's a great idea, Kingsley.
Sounds interesting.
So the Facebook Live thing, why not do that?
Oh, I just was thinking, if I was like up at 8 o'clock or on a Saturday, would I be watching Facebook Live?
Probably not.
Yeah.
You would.
Somebody may.
Some people might.
We record the presentation. We don't record the whole Saturday session, but the first, basically, the city manager's office presentation we record for rebroadcast, we can put that out. I think the Facebook Live idea that Kingsley and I were talking about, you know, at some point, we could, I wouldn't necessarily focus that on an actual meeting, but if a council representative or Dennis or myself or somebody wanted to kind of do a live Q and A on social media, just about the budget, let people type in questions and we'll type back for an hour or whatever, we could do something like that. That might be a little bit more engaging and of interest. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we need to Facebook Live the Saturday session, though.
It is thrilling.
I think we should explore its use, and maybe not the Saturday, but just in general. So we might be thinking about when to do that, how to.
The interactive question.
Yeah, we've used that on composting and a few other topics recently. And it's worked out, worked out pretty well for us. So we could explore its use with the budget.
Okay, so the breakfast is going to start when?
7:30.
7:30. And the work session's going to start at 8. Is that right? So there'll be coffee, there'll be whatever, and some various.
We'll handle the food selection, we'll keep Kingsley out of that. Out there, yeah.
Healthy sex.
Okay, good deal. Great idea.
Good idea.
Yeah. All right, anything else on the information packet? Okay, council updates. I think maybe we haven't been very busy over the last two weeks, but does anybody have any council update about boards, commissions, committees that they're on? All right, since no one has any updates about that, I think we're done with our work session. We'll reconvene at 7 with a formal meeting.